Okay, I'll go ahead and get this ball rolling. I wanted to say good evening, everyone. So I wanted to do this student centric town hall based on the events that have occurred at our Board of Trustees meetings over the last couple of months. This mainly started back in September when there was an equity statement that was proposed. And a few board members took issue with some of the words that were in the statement and that centered mainly around systemic racism, institutional racism. I hope that some of you have read the articles and then kind of seen a little bit of this beforehand. But I just wanted to kind of see what the student voice was at this moment and get an idea of how we feel as students and what kind of messages that we can send to our board, to our faculty, to our staff, to the basically the upper people at Questa and just, you know, kind of see, let them hear our voice. So I've asked Professor McKernan to help us and be a moderator of this event. So I'm going to pass the mic over to him. And he'll give a short introduction. So thank you Zach for helping us out.
Yep, thank you so much Xavier. So I would like to first just keep this very simple and welcome everybody to this evening's town hall listening session. Because what it tells me is that everybody here cares immensely about the well being of our college and each other. Second, I would like to thank Xavier and Questa's student government leaders for inviting me to moderate this listening session. I am both honored and humbled to be among so many brilliant people. Third, I want to recognize that this is a response to recent actions by Board Trustee Peter Sizak and counter actions by concerned students and community members. In fact, this listening session is a counter action to address trustees Sizak's actions. It is also an action to organize and to reflect on our individual moods as much as the mood of the community and a nation. In this sense, it is important to recognize the very local things that we are experiencing are intimately connected to and framed by the national environment. Fifth, this is civic dialogue. I quote deliberate, sustained, informed communication on complex and multi dimensional issues that are of concern to multiple segments of a community and that elicit multiple and often conflicting perspectives. And also that asserting dialogue about civic issues is a fundamental foundation of our democracy. Next, because this is a listening section and I as the moderator am not here to talk, but to listen, will do our best to follow the following format. We have six questions, five of which have been posed by the ASCC. And I will introduce each question and step back and the floor will be open. For those who would like to make comments, please try to limit your comments to two minutes. So everybody has a chance to speak. If it doesn't appear that people are waiting to chime in, by all means, continue. And when you're ready to speak, please use the chat function or the raise your hand emblem in Zoom. And we'll try to aim at eight to 10 minutes for each question. And finally, before we get going, there are two particular announcements that need attention. One will be presented by Ally Phelps and following Bailey Dreschler and Will Appleton, please.
All right, thank you Zach. Um, I just wanted to make a quick announcement about an event that is coming up in early December. We're having a student check in campus wide. We wanted to check in with the students to see how they've been feeling over these past two semesters with COVID and everything else that's been going on. And so we're creating a space on December 3rd on Zoom and three different sessions at 10, 2, and 5 o'clock PM. So students can come, they can talk, they can share their experiences and they can come up with solutions. And so there'll be more information about that in a Zoom link in your email. And also you can find that on the event calendar on Questa's website.
All right. Hi, everyone. So my name's Will. Um, I just want to bring everyone's attention to something. Professor Dreschler and her students as kind of an extracurricular activity worked together to put together this amazing document that's just got a bunch of resources in it. It's available to any student who is dealing with racism and social justice and the fatigue that comes along with dealing with those issues. Their idea was kind of centered around the need for compassionate connections and resources. And kind of based around that question of how can we support students who are experienced race, experiencing racism and social justice fatigue? So Professor Dreschler, is there anything else that you'd like to say?
Can I hire you?
Uh, I'll work on a retainer agreement. How does that sound?
Love it. Thanks, Will. I think you've covered it.
Okay, thank you so much. So I don't know if Xavier did mention this. This is being recorded and we'll sort of segue into my first question by way of introductions. I think as both the moderator and as a historian, it's important to understand that what we say today will be a powerful testimony, a powerful testimony for future Questa students and community members about how students are tackling and addressing local issues that again resonate with national currents and topics and indeed movements. Given this, what we say today isn't only addressed to a present audience, but to future generations who will look back on Questa and San Luis Obispo in 2020 and the actions and counter actions that have brought us here today. Given this, I'd like to open the floor for people to introduce themselves to future generations and to identify any clubs or organizations that they represent and what brought you here today.
Well, first of all, everyone, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Jesus and it has, I'm a student here at Questa College. I, my major is human development slash social justice. I've been a dual enrollment. Well, I'm no longer a dual enrollment student. However, I'm also the trustee and student leader here at Questa College and I also sit on the Board of Trustees. And as many may know, the incendiary Facebook posts from one of our board members has made Questa the recent local spotlight and the conversation. And yeah, I just kind of wanted really to say that the students here should know that we also form part of this system. We pay our tuition. We have freedom to speak as we'd like with, without being afraid, intimidated. Because this is really a spot where we should come, you know, to a dialogue, whatever that may look like. So I really encourage everyone of our students to be vocal and to be sincere, because this is what this event is all about. Um, I just did want to say, mention really quickly that yeah, we, we ought to really look into this issue of racism that exists, uh, the highest spheres of this district. And I think we need to start addressing that because if it exists on the top, and that means it exists on the bottom as well. So we ought to address it. And I think that whatever happens with the Board of Trustees, we really ought to tackle systemic and institutionalized racism in this campus. And that is why as a student, not as a student leader representing AS, I call on students, faculty, administrators to declare racism a public health crisis at the San Luis Obispo Community College District. The physiological, the psychological toll this has taken on some of our students, not just students of color and diverse background, of diverse backgrounds, but also our LGBT students, our transgender students. And this must be taken into consideration. And that's why I'm calling as a student that Questa College declare racism a public health crisis. The city of San Luis Obispo has already declared it a public health crisis. We ought to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Go ahead and chime in second. My name is Xavier Ortiz. I am the ASCC Equity Senator. This is my second semester here at Questa College. I'm a political science major. My first real experience with the college was actually attending the board meeting because being a political science major, I wanted to see kind of how the board conducted themselves and I happened to chime in at the right meeting, tackled something that I care very deeply about, which is equity. As soon as I, I heard the comments, I decided to jump in and see what I could do. Happened to be the same exact day I received an email from Dr. Gutierrez about joining ASCC. So I just jumped in, introduced myself, basically said, what can I do to help? And so, um, yeah, I just wanted to put this event together so that we as students can help elevate our voice. And I hope that everyone that's a student here is not afraid to speak out. I know that there are a lot of names on here, but just, uh, they give it to just students talking amongst each other because I wanted to be a comfortable and safe space for all of us. So once again, thank you for showing up and I appreciate your time.
Thanks Xavier. Would anybody else like to introduce themselves and share why in fact they've joined the town hall this evening?
Uh, yeah, I'll jump in here. So, um, I'm also another member of AS. I'm currently serving as a senator and I'm also in our Equity and Diversity Task Force. That's kind of how this first got brought up to my attention was concerning Resolution 1420. I was really disappointed when I saw that the board was taking issue with language like noting with deep concern centuries of racism and oppression in this country and that they actually made motions to strike it. And then all of this came out about Pete Sizak and I realized he's the guy who's on the committee that's supposed to rework this document. So that was really concerning. I thought the viewpoints that he expressed in his posts were just disgusting and quite frankly, they don't have any place on our Board of Trustees. And then on top of that, I found out that he's actually my representative. I live in his district. And for that, for me, that was just, that was too much. I was like, nope, something has to be done about this. So I've gone to the special meeting that the board held and the meeting before that I've spoken at both, called for his resignation. Asked him at both meetings to disavow white supremacist groups because one of his Facebook posts, he did at, uh, express support for the Proud Boys. So altogether, that's just, it, it has no place on our campus. So that's why I'm here today, just to express my support for the BIPOC students on campus and BIPOC faculty and just calling for his resignation again.
Thanks so much, Will. It looks like we have time for about two more. Would anybody else like to share why in fact they've joined the town hall meeting tonight?
Sure, I will. I'm a second year engineering student at Questa. I teach, I tutor math and chemistry at the Student Success Center. And I came here tonight because I think that Sizak's, his actions are unacceptable. And I just want to express my support for everyone who's trying to remove him from the board. I don't have too much else to say. Thank you.
Thank you Harvey. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. If not, I would be happy to move to the next question that was presented by the student government leaders and I will add a bit to it. And the question that was delivered to me that I think have been, have been being, has been being expressed thus far are what are your thoughts and concerns with how Board President Sizak is conducting himself? And I would like to add to that, how should we address these concerns?
I'll chime in first. I think that the way he's conducting himself is one that is not of which a leader should conduct himself. He, he read his statement at the special meeting. And in the statement, he very specifically stated that he will not be bullied, which to me is very short sighted because how could you say you're being bullied? When in fact, everything that you stated on Facebook and then after that part in your, and your statement was bullying the communities of color on our campus. You're basically diminishing their issues. And I believe that I stated in my statement that the board cannot move forward without implicit bias being a constant reminder because he continues to be there. So in, in my mind, in fact, he's actually bullying the other trustees because he refuses to do the right thing, which would be to step down. And I hope that through our conversation, it can help persuade him to, to stop being a victim in this and actually be part of the solution, which would be to step down and, and relinquish your power so that somebody else with a more equitable and diverse mindset can take that position.
Thanks Xavier. Would anybody else like to follow up on Xavier's comment about leadership equality? And his perception of trustee Sizak diminishing issues of minoritized students?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in if I could. Um, I was deeply disappointed to hear his statement. To me, it sounded like he was not considering what the students were saying. He was immediately on the defensive and felt like he was being attacked. He mentioned that he felt like he was being bullied. And I completely disagree. He is an elected official and I believe that is his constituents holding him accountable for his actions, which that's what we're supposed to do with our elected officials. So his, his response was just completely unacceptable. And at this point going forward, I think the board needs to move forward with their censure process and I think he needs to step down. At this point, that's really the only way that I see the board moving forward.
And that addresses the question of how you believe that we should address the actions of President Sizak by since, by, by censuring and moving towards removal?
Yeah, that's just kind of board specific. For the broader community, I think we just need to keep showing up to the board meetings. We need to keep having discussions like the one that we're having right now. Cause this needs to be an open conversation that we continually have, you know? He needs to know that we're still talking about this. This is still at the forefront of our minds and that we're not just going to forget about this in a month or two. You know, as long as he is on the board, this is a discussion that we're going to have to have. Because at the end of the day, he's making decisions that are going to impact every single student on campus.
Good. So it sounds like you're advocating for, to continue to show up to meetings and keep the conversation in public around civic dialogue. Do any other students or any other community members have any other ideas about how we could address these issues or perceived issues?
Is it okay as a faculty member or I don't want to take away time from students?
No, no, I said, go ahead. It's totally fine.
Please.
Well, you all know the divisiveness in our culture and locally, nationally. There is an organization called WEAVE. It's an acronym and I can't remember what it stands for. But it's, it's a project attempting to bring the extreme polarities together. And one of the thoughts that I'm wondering about is if a trustee Sizak could be invited to be open to looking at how he can be part of the solution in dialogue. And it would require some very finessed moderating and facilitation. Uh, and that's, there was more to it than that, but this is coming from a place of attempting not to ostracize and blackball anyone so that they're forever censored, but giving them another opportunity to be willing to learn how to, to listen across the, the divide.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or concerns about the question about President Sizak and how he's conducting himself and how we should address these actions?
Well, I just really wanted to quickly say that I, I think that, you know, as a student, you know, he should have really addressed Questa a little bit more in his speech, given the fact that, you know, this is Questa. Um, I really would have liked to see that. And I think moving forward, you know, we do need to as a Questa community, make sure that we understand that this isn't just some partisan attack because of his beliefs. So I think having a dialogue table to have discussions, you know, we're not, you know, making it clear to trustees Sizak, you know, where we just want to engage in talking. That's all. And I think that that's where I would invite, you know, the students, other board members, administration, community members, maybe to attend teachers. Yeah. I, I think that that's what we ought to do.
Okay, thank you. And that was to segue into the second question that was posed by the student government leaders is what message would you like to share with the Board of Trustees as a corporate body or an entirety?
I think I'll start the conversation off again. My message to the Board of Trustees, and I see that there are a few here, which I definitely appreciate you showing up today and I appreciate you, your support. I'm glad that you guys in unison decided that he should resign and I'm glad that you spoke and said that. I think that as moving forward, if Pete refuses to sign down, uh, to step down, then you guys need to continuously hold him accountable for the things that he does. I don't believe that there should be a long period of time from when the chancellor called the action at the beginning of the year till a rejected statement in September. I don't think that that much, that much time should go by anymore when it comes to equity on this campus. I think that it's been very clear that the public believes and the students and the faculty and the staff all believe that equity should be at the forefront of the minds of the people on the board. And that, um, like, like as you said, this isn't an attack on a political standpoint of you conservative liberal. It's not an attack on that at all. It's an attack on what we as students believe should be a main talking point. And that is Questa College should be a safe, neutral place for us to learn and succeed and excel and eventually become community leaders on our own. And I, I hold that very close to my heart. And I hope that you guys as trustees, especially ones that represents me, continue to put that at the front of your guys' conversations moving forward and, and working with Pete. So thank you.
And would, would any of the trustees like to respond to Xavier?
Well, this is trustee Pat Mullen and just briefly, I don't want to take others' time, but I just want to say thanks to all the students and student leaders for organizing this forum. I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to, to hear people's thoughts, hear people's opinions, share information. So primarily I'm just here to listen, but I couldn't agree more that I think, you know, one of our prime missions in the first sentence of our mission statement talks about inclusion and equity and everyone, everyone feeling comfortable coming to Questa to pursue their education, to pursue their growth in any number of areas. So just in short, that's kind of how I see it. And I appreciate everyone's participation in this forum today. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Mullen.
You bet.
Would any of the other trustees like to respond to Xavier?
Hi, this is Mary Strawberry and I want to express almost exactly what trustee Mullen expressed. We are at Questa. Questa College is there for all students and we want to make sure that they feel safe, that they feel accepted and that they can go through school, get out into the workforce and just be successful in life. And that's what we're there for and that's what we will continue to work for. And so I just wanted to let all the students know, thank you for coming and expressing this. I appreciate it a lot. So, um, thank you.
Thank you trustee Strawberry. And that would actually is a nice segue into the next question that was posed by the student government leaders is, and this is mainly I think directed at students who are enrolled in Questa and maybe students who have previously been enrolled in Questa, but it's a very basic question, but I think it gets at a very, a big answer and a question of context and environment. And that question is how do you feel Questa College is doing in creating an equitable campus? I can repeat that. How do you feel Questa College is doing in creating an equitable campus?
I can chime in on that. Um, I'm Ariel. I'm a student at Questa. Um, and I'm just here to talk from my heart. Um, I think it's kind of a little like ridiculous that the students who are being discriminated against are the ones who have to keep talking about why they deserve to feel accepted at Questa College. I think that is stress inducing and I think that it takes away from us succeeding by taking away time from our studies and our jobs and our families. So I, I would like to see something done immediately. I don't want this to be drawn out as long as it has been. I think that every time we're making the student government talk about why they deserve to have acceptance by our own board is harmful. And I'd like to see something done immediately, not just talking about it, like actually having something done.
Thank you Ariel. I think that brings up a very, um, uh, interesting point that students who are feeling discriminated have to play a dual role, one of speaking out and and also at the very same time, uh, trying to study and, uh, have a, a, a working life. And it creates stress, a stress, lots of stress. So I'm sorry that you're feeling that stress. And because of that, does anybody else have any thoughts of how Questa College is doing in creating an equitable campus to relieve that stress? Or that duality perhaps that minority, minoritized students are in fact, uh, experiencing by having to speak out and study and work at the same time?
I just think that, you know, right now, um, just given all the overlap that's happening, you know, especially during COVID. You know, I think professors really ought to be equitable. You know, and, and just having that, that communication with the students and all the other stakeholders, like the tutoring center, the library. You know, the student government, you know, whatever that may look like. I also think that really something going forward here is if we really want to change what, what really equity is and diversity and inclusion. It's like, we really need to pay attention and focus to, you know, the hiring of more diverse staff, you know, that will enrich Questa even more than it already is. You know, and I think that if we study, if we focus as a whole college on, on, and as, as from top to bottom on creating our ethnic studies program, you know, we have no expert on that. On creating our ethnic studies program, you know, we have no expert on that. Subject on Africana studies, on Latinx studies, I, I think, and Asian studies. I think we really ought to focus on that. And that's really how we'll achieve the equity gaps, you know? And I think we really need to focus on that moving forward. Regardless and during, especially this time that we're seeing this friction with trustee Sizak. So I think we really ought to focus on that as well.
Thanks, Jesus. Would anybody else like to comment on how they feel Questa College is doing? In creating an equitable campus? It seems like, Jesus, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have spelled out. Uh, an important aspect of making the curriculum equitable as well as uh, the governing structure of Questa College. Is that correct?
Also the hiring practices, which are. In my opinion and statistically shown to be disproportionate to our applicants of colors for faculty positions. So yes, I do think we need to address that. And if we, we can change our curriculums all we want. We can install a lot of programs. Yes, they will be helpful. But if we do not get to that core idea as a Hispanic serving institution. Then we're not gonna see the results. Our transfer rates will remain how they are. Our grades will suffer. So yes, I think that that is something we need to focus on.
Thank you, Jesus. Are there any other students or perhaps staff and even faculty would like to answer or even administration? To give their perspective on how they believe Questa College is doing, or maybe what Questa College has done to create an equitable campus?
I'll chime in really quickly before anybody else jumps in. Um, and that's just. I want to point out that being part of the Equity Senator has allowed me to jump in on a lot of different committees. And um, Academic Senate, the, the student, Equity Student and Success Committee, I've been able to see. That Pete Sizak's comments and actions and his statement from the last special board meeting. Doesn't necessarily represent uh, Questa as a whole, because there are a lot of good actions that are being done. Within the staff and faculty, which is what makes it so much more disappointing. Um, I saw the comment from Marsha Harvey that even the faculty doesn't feel accepted because he doesn't represent their goals and their values. And I. I would just like to highlight that um, I've seen that from within the, the college. And I've made this statement before, and I think I should say it again, and that is equity at a institution like Questa College shouldn't start from the ground up. It should, it should start from the top and trickle down. And I think that that diversity and that equitable change uh, needs to happen at the board level. And I feel like that's the, that's the one true thing that is lacking, because then that would lend way to exactly what Jesus mentioned, which is. Helping our curriculum become more uh, diverse, helping uh, the faculty and staff become more diverse. Just opening up a whole possibility of how we can continue moving forward. It should definitely start from the top down and then. Be great examples, great leaders for us. We, we shouldn't, we, we as students shouldn't be leaders for our Board of Trustees.
Thank you. That's a, that's a um, an apt point that equity should, um, we're thinking about the starting point of equity. Um, and again, tying that to leadership. Thanks so much, Xavier. Um, and let me just, we have about. We have about, let's see, um, yeah, we have 20 minutes left and I can move on to our. Next question about representation on campus. And this, of course, is um, meant to elicit answers from students. And again, it's a question that was posed by the student um, uh, government leaders. And it is, how do you? Or do you feel like you are represented enough on campus and how would you like to see that representation changed? Or I guess maybe I could add to that, I'm thinking about. Where and through what channels do you see representation articulated? How are you represented on campus or not represented on campus?
Um, can I, can I respond to that? Some?
Please.
Hi, um, this is Jenna Flores. I'm um, counselor for the EOPS program. I also live in South County. And I also have been um, for many, many years, the counselor stationed at the South County Center. And um, I don't think we have enough representation from students from South County. I don't think there's a great effort made. To um, recruit students from that area. Uh, we've lost students at the South County. Alan Hancock um, goes out to uh, Royal Grande High School, Lopez High School, and they recruit students. That should be in our county and could be taking advantage of classes at Questa College. So I don't know. I mean, I understand that um, Pete Sizak is a representative for South County, if I'm correct. And I don't think there's, he's, he or whoever is supposed to be making a big effort to um, push for um, the South County Center to. Become a stronger entity than, than what it is. Um, I, as a counselor, um, I have a, a little space that I, I see council. Students in, they actually, it's actually a closet where they keep the AV equipment. So when I get there, um, well, not right now with COVID, but before, when I get there, they, the staff would have to take all the AV equipment out. Of that little room and put it in the hallway so that I could sit there. Half the time, there was no internet. A lot of times I have to counsel with my phone, using my phone um, to access student. Information to provide the student um, with no printing. I mean, it's embarrassing, okay? It's embarrassing uh, to work under those circumstances. And now I find that this. Person who was supposed to be representative of that area, I don't know how strongly he's making any effort to improve the conditions. Or, or what the board's doing, but I, I think that we're losing students from South County to Alan Hancock. Because we don't have a stronger presence there. And we're not doing any kind of job to go out to Oceano, Arroyo Grande. Um, and recruit some of the minoritized populations there that could be coming to Questa College. And we could be collecting that money to help our campus. Um, so, I mean, I don't mean to make this a complaint session. But it is a fact. And um, I think we would have more representation if we had some effort, some more push. I don't know exactly, I could come up with ideas, but I, I mean, I'm just pointing out. This issue at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. I think that's a very wise point that you're making that when we um, tend to think about representation, perhaps we overlook the idea of geographical representation. In this being said, that perhaps there's a lack of um, community members from the South County uh, representing on our campus. And perhaps we could uh, do better in our outreach efforts um, along that line, along those lines. Thank you so much, Janet. Are there any other comments about representation on campus, or do you feel like you're being represented enough? And if you would like to see any um, change to that representation? Or I guess my question would be too, are there any particular clubs that are helping? You being represented and heard?
Uh, if I could just comment on that really quickly, um, before I turn it over to someone else. Um, we do have Mitch, uh, we have Dreamers United. We have the uh, Quested um, Black Student Union. Um, we have Questa Pride. Um, that's among the ones that I can think of off the top of my head. Um, however, I just did want to also um, kind of really kind of um, sit back and I really want to hear from. From the female students, because I know that this was something that a lot of female students felt very strongly about. Um, and I wanted to turn it over to the ladies, because you know, in my family, my mother's word is just as important as my father's. So I just kind of wanted to. Open the floor.
And I'll echo Jesus.
I want to speak up, because I don't want the. Female voice to be silent. And, and I'm going to just throw out that our silence does not mean consent. Our silence does not mean that we don't want any changes. And our silence does not mean that we don't feel strong. Thank you for pushing. The female voice and um, I'll. Turn it over to the. Community.
Thank you. Would anybody like, else like to comment on representation on campus? Whether that be gender, geographic, class, perhaps?
I'll just throw in one comment on representation and that is. I just want everyone to, to know that i- if you don't feel like you're being represented enough and you don't feel comfortable saying it in this exact. Environment, please feel free to reach out either to myself, to anybody on campus. Representation is huge. It's what makes you feel comfortable. It's what makes you feel safe. And I know during the times of COVID, that it's. Easy to get lost, but there is, the, the campus is very active. I mean, I feel bad for Dr. G and Ally sometimes, because I feel like they're in Zoom sessions all day long. And that would drive me crazy. So um, just know that there are ways to, to feel like you have helped, to feel like there is representation. And if there isn't, then us as student government want to make sure that you have a space. We want to help grow all of our clubs. We want to, our BSU is in its first year, and I think that we should help make sure that, that, that they feel safe to continue growing. Give them a space, give a space for Questa Pride. I want to make sure that. As Equity Senator, everyone feels like they have a solid chance in being represented. So. Just want to throw that out there. I know it's a, it's, it's a very touchy topic and people may not feel comfortable speaking about it right now, but. We're here and we're here to help. And so I just wanted to remind everyone that.
I want to thank you for that comment, because what I've written, written in my notes here, Xavier, I said, representation, representation equals safety. And then when you're safe, I just went ahead and added a little. Plus mark and that means, that means success. You could be successful when, when you're safe and you're, you're safe when you're represented. So um, I would invite anybody to reach out uh, to Xavier, um, if you're having concerns about uh, representation. Thanks so much, Xavier.
And I also did, um, sorry, professor.
It's okay, Jesus.
I really just quickly wanted to say and put myself out there as well on inbox scales. You'll see my email. Also, with, with, with ever opinion you lie on this, I want to make sure that your voice is heard, because I'm representing you. When I'm talking on the board, I'm representing each and every one of you. And I want to hear each and every one of your opinions, no matter what it is. I want you to know that you have my certainty that it'll stay among us, that you will not be part of um, any ostracization from me. Also, um, I just kind of wanted, I don't want it to touch on uh. Well, let me see, how do I frame this? Um, we really just kind of need to. And never mind, I'll turn it over to someone else.
Would anybody like to follow up on Xavier or Jesus?
Uh, yeah, if I could chime in on this, um, one of the things that I would really love to see is a more diverse faculty. Um, I've been attending Questa first as uh, dual enrichment, starting my junior year. Um, and I've now been here as a full-time student for the past two, two and a half years. Uh, about ninety to ninety four, uh, ninety-five percent of the courses that I've taken have been taught by white professors. Our Board of Trustees is mainly made up of white people, so it doesn't feel like. Representation and diversity are a major factor when it comes to hiring and leadership decisions. And I think that's really kind of disappointing. Um, so that's something that I would like to see changed. As far as representation goes, we do have Cougar Pride on campus. Um, so I would love to see more clubs like that and just figuring out how we can help clubs like that grow.
Great. And I'll go ahead and put a, a plug in for um, uh, Cougar Pride. They just came out with their first podcast. And if you're interested in the link, it's, 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 it's really, it's, it's really fantastic. So um, if you're interested in the link, reach out to uh. Questa Pride or me at Zachary underscore McCurn at questa.edu. Um, and just, uh, I want to again, thank you for um, the constructive conversations that we've been having, the conversation that we've been having here. And just a concluding question, I'm going to amend this a little bit, the question that came to me. I would like to ask students. Two things. And the final question is, could they identify um, things in the college that um, are going well? For them and also the follow-up, anything that they would like to see change in the college? So it's a two-part question, what the college is doing well? And what types of change? I think we've already mentioned some, particularly hiring, maybe changes in the curriculum to have a more diverse faculty. But that will be my concluding question for the evening. What is the, what is the college doing well? And what would you like to see? Change at the college?
I think that given um, you know, just our, the publicity in the county. We really kind of need to. Set out state, set out statements in each of our respective departments, clubs, whatever it might be. Um, just to go ahead and make sure that all of the marginalized voices. The groups that felt attacked or discriminated against, that includes our undocumented students. I've had ESL students ask me if, you know, what's gonna happen? Is he gonna try to stop us from coming to school? Um, you know, some DACA students really worried like, oh my God, you know, he's calling on us to be deported. So I really think we do need to reassure our students that they're in a safe space. And I think that we, you know, need a call on, you know. Regardless of the California Sanctuary policy, we need to make statements that, you know, we will not communicate with immigration authorities. In any way, oh, through official or backdoor channels. I think we need to really kind of hone in on that. And just make sure that something administration really has failed us to mention specific marginalized groups. Like our LGBT students, like our undocumented students. They've, they've, it's been very generic and. That's unfortunate to say, however, I, I applaud administration in going ahead and taking that move, but we need to see more. Yes, we need to see statements, but we also need to see actions. And where channels do not exist, administration should seek to build those channels with students, with other departments. Focus groups and adding incentives for students to go ahead and, and join on. And also something positive, I think that, that I'm just seeing on this campus is just the level of help. Oh my, that is something that I seen and it's like this bleak moments I've been having to just make sure what is good on campus and. You know, we've, they, there's been a food drive, you know, um, our, our staff here are actively involved in that. Our health department is up and running. Um, our teachers have made themselves available to help students out during this time. You know, um, financial aid is helping as much as they can. The foundation is trying to provide scholarships for our students. Um, and, and the food pantry is up and running, but let's, you know, so I see those things and. I just get really happy. And I think that that's really the equity programs that, you know, are out there and we need to. Assure, we need to also state the positives, but also state in specifics what's going on and how we can change it. I think that that's really key.
Thank you, Jesus. Are there any other students who would like to share their opinions about what the college is doing or has done well? And any changes that they would like to see in the college?
I'll jump in. Um, I'll keep it kind of short, because I want to make sure that everyone else has the time to speak, but. I'm gonna go right to the Equity Task Force that was formed by the California Community Colleges Chancellor. He put together Equity Task Force. They came out with a findings report in February of this year. And key finding number one is that diversity increases student achievement. And I just want that to be heard by all the educational leaders on this Zoom call. Is that diversity is what is going to increase our student achievement and it's what's going to help them succeed. And that leads into number two, which is diversity impacts student and employee retention. Uh, if students of color see faculty of color, um, staff of color, it helps them feel comfortable. It helps that faculty and staff can help point them to the direction of clubs, to the direction of programs to help them succeed. I believe that the college has these items intact. Um, I believe that the college has these items intact, they're just not being executed in a way. That are immediately seen by everybody, and I would hope that that's one of the things that can change. And that, I know that there is a, a lot of negative that is coming from Board President Pete Sizak right now. But if, if we as students can refocus the attention right back on to equity and diversity. Then we could overstep Pete and, and use his mistakes as a way to shout. From the top of Questa that equity and diversity is what we stand for, it's what we're gonna change, it's what we're gonna make be at the forefront of our communications. And just really. Put an emphasis on that, it's, it's what I believe is going to be huge, and I'm gonna echo what Jesus said at the beginning, and that is, Slow County did declare. Uh, racial inequity is a public health concern, and I believe that Questa should do the same thing, that, eh, the mental. Uh, state of students that are going through these issues, uh, it's, it's one that's huge, and it could be affecting them right now in their grades. And this, the campus should be willing to acknowledge that and to immediately put forth ways to help them. Pete's comments, Pete's Facebooks, um, the people that aren't making comments are the ones that I worry about the most. Because they could be impacted, they could choose not to come back next semester. And no student deserves to go through that, and Pete's statement that he read at the special meeting. It, it exacerbates that, because it basically shows the student, there was no mention of the student, it's just, here's what I've done, and I'm a victim. And that hurts, because wh- where are we in this big picture? So, board members that are here, I ask you, that you implore to him, that he redo his statement. Uh, and, and one apologize and one address the students, how can you see yourself move forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Is it, um, Marcia, Ma- Marcia? Please.
I'm having trouble unmuting myself, but.
You're unmuted, I think I got you.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, yeah, I just wanted to know what. Faculty at this point, and Rosemary Wren has written a nice list of things, which I'm pretty much on top of, but. If there's something here that the students would like for faculty to do, to show, indicate, you know, their support. I hope you'll let us know, because everyone that I have spoken to, and it's a fair number of faculty. Um, you know, they're, they're horrified by Mr. Sizak's remarks, and they really are, are, are not sure how to, um. How to even communicate that to all the students.
Thank you. Well, it looks like, unlike my lectures, we've actually stuck to the timetable here, we are three minutes to the, we are three minutes to the hour. Um, and um, unless there's any closing, does anybody have any closing remarks, as a matter of fact, before I?
My honest, I, I, I just did, and you wanna know what, I think I, I sent it um, to Ally to put on the public chat for everyone. I, I really think that as, as, you know, as Questa being an, an institution of higher learning with. With a lot of smart minds in different sectors of, you know, this society, we need to bring on experts. To go ahead and explain racism in the public health crisis to administration. Firstly, um, briefing her that, um, briefing Dr. Sterns, you know, so. She understands, you know, as an administrator, because that, this could affect, you know, our accreditation going down the line. You know, making sure that, um, our staff also, um, have, have experts briefing them. Faculty briefing them, um, um, faculty being briefed and our board members being briefed, we need to bring on experts, and I think that. That I'm really kinda calling on as a student, for the college really to kind of reach out to the city. Um, and see and talk to the experts that'll brief us, because we need to really understand this, because. I by no means am no expert on this, on um, health. So I'm calling on others to kind of do that, and really, I think as a students, you know. Yes, we, I can go ahead and, and reach out to the city, but it really kind of falls really on the adults' shoulders. You know, and that's where your salaries and um, my parents', uh, property taxes. And my taxes come into play. So, you know, please, really, but let's do this, let's get it through its own. And really help our sense, and we need to do it urgently, so yeah.
Thank you, Jesus, does anybody have any, anybody else have any closing comments, do you have a wrap?
I, yeah, I would just echo what Jesus said about the need to bring on experts on this. Um, and I think that getting in touch with San Luis Obispo would be an amazing idea, I know that um, Heidi Harmon's already taken note of the situation. And she's actually made public comments that are currently in the Questonian about this situation. So I'm sure that they would be more than willing to assist the college on this matter.
Thanks, Will. Okay, um, well, I just wanted to wrap up and say with a few points. Um, to take home and to consider, I think. A very important point, when we are speaking about equity, um, and the concerns that were brought up by the students and student leaders. Uh, that equity um, begins at the top, or should begin at the top with strong, with strong leadership and be channeled down. To different administrators, faculty clubs and, and students, uh, and that brings us to the importance of uh, leadership and what equity looks like. Uh, through the lens of leadership, which would entail um, consideration of the ethnic studies, um, curriculum. Uh, diversity in the curriculum and um, uh, more diverse hiring uh, practices. I think there was also a very um, smart uh, point when we're thinking about um, equity and representation. Uh, the geographical representation or lack there of the South County uh, was quite important. And also the idea that representation on campus uh, means safety on campus. And I think we could all agree that safety would equate to, um, would equate to success. And I would also like to commend the college for the extreme levels of help that have been articulated. Uh, here tonight, and I would say that this um, listening session is one of many uh, actions that the college facilitates. To help students uh, engage uh, in constructive and critical dialogue, not only with themselves, but again with uh, staff. Uh, faculty, community members, and probably most importantly, the Board of Trustees. Um, so I just wanna return uh, again to that, eh, that important idea of civic dialogue and the maintenance of civic dialogue. That civic dialogue is quote deliberate, sustained, informed communication on complex and multi-dimensional. Issues that are of concern to multiple segments of a community. And that elicit multiple and often conflicting perspectives, and that is just fine. And also that asserting dialogue about civic issues, such as we've covered tonight. It's a fundamental foundation of democracy. So let's leave with that, and I wanna thank you again for participating in a very, very productive listening. Uh, town hall with a special uh, thanks and consideration, of course, to the student leaders who made this all possible. Thank you very much and good evening.
I'll chime in really quickly before we leave. I just wanna say thank you uh, for attending this event, I definitely appreciate it, I know the students, it's really hard to. Speak up, have all of your voices be heard, and, and it's, it's a little concerning when you look and you see some trustees and. And all the teachers and stuff, so I am glad that you're here, and if you contributed, thank you, if you didn't contribute, you just listened, I definitely appreciate that. Uh, to all the faculty and staff that I see here, thank you so much for showing up and lending and listening ear and being here for us, I definitely appreciate it. To the two trustees that are here, I, I appreciate it even more that you're here and showing a willingness to support the students, I think that that's fantastic. Um, I'd also like to point out that Dr. Sterns is here, I'd like to appreciate, uh, say thank you for showing up as well. Um, I just want to know, I just want everyone to know that while Pete's comments have been incendiary. I do believe that I have seen the campus come together and unite against us, and I believe that it's, it's been good. Um, but I don't want to overstep the fact that I've seen in our comments right here, that especially from Harvey. That we can't lose sight that Pete needs to resign, and so I will take this last minute to speak directly to Pete, and I hope that he sees this. Pete, I've already made statements, and I continue, and I will continue to make statement. Your comments were not accepted by this community, especially this college. We would like you to please resign, and at the very least, look at us through the board meetings. And write a sincere apology that tackles the points that you took issue with. Because every issue that you took a, a negative stance on is an issue that affects these students, including myself. So I would like for you to write a sincere apology, I would like for you to step down. And also I would like for you to acknowledge the students that had the courage to show up today. Because it takes a lot for a student who is going through so much, including COVID, to make a statement. And to answer these questions, so Professor McKernan, thank you, Ally, thank you so much. Dr. G, thank you so much, I appreciate being provided the space to even have this conversation. And definitely, I appreciate the educational leaders who took the time to show up today, it means a lot, thank you so much.
Thank you Xavier, and I'll just go ahead and end that off as well and echo a lot of the same things that Xavier has said. Um, thank you to all of our students firstly that have showed up. Because, you know, a cent, it's because of y'alls that we're here, really. Our trustees, uh, Trustee Mullen, uh, Trustee Strobridge, Dr. Sterns, Dr. Escobedo. Up in North County, all of our amazing staff, Xavier that was able to organize this. And provide a space for our students, thank you, and Dr. Mc, and Dr. McKernan, have a good night, everybody.